This conference will now be recorded.
Good evening and welcome to the Alpena City Council Meeting of August 3, 2020. And welcome our visitors online. Call the order please.
Councilwoman Hess is excused. Mayor Potem Johnson?
Here.
Councilman Mitchell?
Here.
Councilman Noah?
Here.
And Mayor Walagora?
Here.
Please rise and put your hands up.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Any approval of the minutes? Any modifications? Oh, I'm sorry, I just, it's new. We have a new format. Forgive me.
You're forgiven.
I just used all in my mind. Yeah. Any, so we need approval and modifications. See agenda.
Can I just ask a question? Is the proposed changes to the Evergreen Cemetery, are we keeping that on this agenda?
I think that that will be postponed at the time that we get to it, Chris.
Yeah, because at the last meeting, it was postponed for this meeting. So I think now you have to bring it up and postpone it again.
Okay.
So it has to stay on the agenda, right?
Okay.
Any other modifications? No. We have to vote on that. Okay, will we approve?
Second. Mayor Potem Johnson?
Yes.
Councilman Mitchell?
Yes.
Councilman Noah?
Yes.
And Mayor Walagora?
Hi.
Motion free.
Here. Now approval of the minutes for regular enclosed session of July 20, 2020. Any issues, changes? Citizens vote, appearing before council on agenda and non-agenda items are allowed five minutes each to address your concerns. It's the only time during a council meeting that citizens are allowed to address your concerns with council. Anyone, we have no guests here because we're at our limit of 10. But if anyone is online to...
I show no one online.
Okay. Thank you, Steve. Oh, Rock?
Yeah.
Oh, please. We have one in attendance.
Rob Edmonds, Deputy Chief of Alpena Fire Department. Chief Forebush couldn't be here tonight, so he asked me to make a really quick presentation. Basically, just to remind voters to go out and vote tomorrow. We have one very important ballot item on the agenda, which is our ambulance mileage for the county. It's very critical for us not only to maintain the service that we have at the ALS and Critical Care, but it also has a financial impact to us. We, obviously, in 40 years, the county has not ever asked for an increase in the mileage, and they are looking for 1.5 mil to operate the county ambulance contract in the service that we provide currently. So we just basically want to encourage people to get out and vote and, and need all the support that we can. So that's what we're looking for.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, we'll move on. There's no public hearing. The consent agenda this evening is bills to be allowed in the amount of $325,699.2 via a ballot for Michigan Municipal League Workers Competition Fund Board of Trustees.
That is supposed to be a comma after the 329.
That's okay. I read right there. I will approve the consent as presented.
Second. Councilman Mitchell?
Yes.
Councilman Noah?
Yes.
Mayor Walagora?
Hi.
And Mayor Potem Johnson?
Yes.
Motion free.
Thank you. Presentations this evening, we have the Here on Undercover Narcotics Team 2019 Annual Report, and Police Chief Joel Jett is presenting that.
Does everybody have a copy or had a chance to review the report? Normally, I go right to the back to see how the same sentence, but we will start on page four of the report. They were to lead the topic. That's going to explain a little bit about arrests. The team in 2019, as you see, they had 98 physical arrests during 2019 with 145 counts. And what that basically means is that one person could have, like, say, two or three multiple counts of a warrant for them. And so, but 98 physical arrests, 51, roughly 52% were made in the city development, which is about normal for the team. We are, as we say, we're kind of the hug, the spoke, for the spokes to go out. So Alpena kind of is a decent road activity, unfortunately, for illicit narcotics. Going on to page five, you will see that they had 49 of the 98 arrests were drug-related and split right down the middle. The other 49 were other non-drug-related arrests. The team is critical to us. We use them on a regular basis for surveillance, for fugitive arrests. We have somebody who's, who's ducking us. They might see patrol car, but they won't see the hunt car coming. And so they're very, very effective. And we have somebody that we're looking for that we want to get off the streets. We often call on them. They're very effective at that. Page six, we, they had 169 cases in 2019. As you can see, that's, they are increasing. They only had that number right around 2016 with 163. And, and you'll see in the bottom that methamphetamine was right over at the top. And we're seeing a large increase in methamphetamine cases, unfortunately. The labs are going down, but we're seeing an increase in dealers. And so they had 29 cases there and 39 cases involving what we call street drugs or addiction. And what that entails, the team might have tipped, somebody is on a bus coming to Alpena or on flight or something is being shipped. That wasn't me, by the way. So, so they had 39 cases where they might meet somebody at the bus stop or take a canine to the airport, that type of thing. That would be a street drug addiction case. So they had 39 of those. It could be FedEx, UPS, or whatever. Since the drug seized, as you see, ecstasy was leading the pack with a street value of $16,500. And for those who are familiar with ecstasy, it's a synthetic drug. It's a stimulant talent methamphetamine, but also it's a hallucinogenic, much like mescaline or acid or something like that. Unfortunately, we're seeing a rise in that activity. And forfeitures on page eight, with the decriminalization of marijuana. When I was on the team, marijuana was, was, like I said, the bread and butter of activities, so it's forfeitures. The sense, the change in that, you've seen forfeitures are dramatically decrease. This year, they have $9,522 and seized property with $2,193. And that has been adjudicated. That means that there's been a formal ruling or judgment on those cases, and that money has been disposed of or transferred, or whether it could be a vehicle also. Probably the most relevant thing on page nine is going to be search and seizures. They had 23 search warrants and 20 knock and talks. So since, knocking talk is exactly what, what it entails where you'll show up at somebody's house, you knock on the door and say, hey, we'll come and talk with you. We have some, we have some concerns here, we'd love to speak with you. It's a consent type of contact. It's not a search warrant. So those are pretty holding fairly steady as of past years. And then I'll skip over 10 or 11 unless you have any questions. Basically, so, well, actually, I won't. That is, that's becoming a more critical part of the team. Where they're getting out there more in the public, they're, I think they had two last year where they'll meet with groups. Sometimes they'll be invited to come in. Often they'll, they'll kind of invite themselves to come to a board meeting saying, hey, we really need to talk about something. But often we're seeing more invites into community organizations so people understand what's kind of happening in our area. And, you know, we often hear, I always see this as a compliment, but people say, well, there's no drug or crime in Alpena. We say, well, thank you. You know, there is here, but we try to stay on top of it. So they're, they're getting out there and they're also involved in a lot of programs of educating parents which have watched for, for personality or behaviors, and that's proving to be very successful also. But on pages 14, 15, I think we've got a mixed couple, 16 also. They kind of just basically give an overview of some of the more high-profile cases. Basically, the, the team is an indispensable law enforcement partner for, for all of us in this region. They, I cannot put a value on, on what they do. The last page, page 18, you'll see that we contribute, each partner contributes roughly $8,000 in manpower if we can to the team, and that is frankly a bargain price. Not here to sell it, I'm just telling you how I feel about it. It's, it's, I can't imagine law enforcement in this region without a narcotics team. So they, they provide a critical role and we rely on it on a regular basis. But I know that was an overview, but if anybody has any questions, I was volunteered to come up tonight to give the annual report. Lieutenant Sherf is unavailable tonight. Was happy to do so. If anybody has any questions, I can answer. I don't know, I was going to say keep them real simple.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much for the appearance. We'll just take the final one.
I will briefly save and fire.
Second.
Councilman Noah?
Yes.
Mayor Walagora?
Hi.
Mayor Potem Johnson?
Yes.
And Councilman Mitchell?
Yes.
Motion free.
Thank you. Next up for announcements, the state primary election will be held on Tuesday, which is tomorrow, August 4. Polls open 7:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. Anything to add?
I'm just excited for it to be here and excited for it to be done.
So let's try. All right. The Finance Director's Fourth Quarter Reporting ended June 30, 2020 is on, is under Mayoral Proclamations, but if you'd like me to proclaim it, the fourth quarter.
It's under Mayoral.
It's okay, though.
We approve that. We're all listening.
Well, they aren't.
We approved it. So we're going to leave it there. We have to leave it there.
Been a little distracted lately.
That's all right. Go ahead, please. That's fine.
Okay. So with this report, we should be at 100% of our budget for June 30, 2020. As you can see, in the green part, that's the revenue section. So the actual year-to-date is $9.9 million, or $9,922,790. And we had amended that to $10,309,613. So we still have a little bit to go there. We've received 96% of the budget, and this is, this is all extremely preliminary. There's been no accruals, no adjustments, no year-end journal entries. We haven't even had our audit yet. So this is just very preliminary numbers. So just going over to the explanation of variance off to the side for general, it's at 101% of budget, and that's because we received help money or payment and lieu taxes. It wasn't paid until July. So without that accrual, it looks like we, it's lower. We still have an adjustment. It'll, it'll go back down. The next one for City Hall, we're at 96%, almost 97%. The rental inspections and other reimbursement revenue is kind of low. And we still have things that we might have received in July and maybe in August that we can still move back. For IT, we haven't received the external fiber rent yet, so that's why we're at almost 94% of budget. Cemetery is way over at 121% because burial revenue and perpetual lock care fund maintenance was higher than we had budgeted. Police revenue looks good at 98%. Fire EMS is very low, and that's because the annual accrual for the revenue hasn't been entered yet. And that's where we take the, the outstanding at June 30, and we accrue that back. And it's usually in the neighborhood of like 300, 400, 500,000. So that'll really bring us up to 100% of the amended budget. Public Works revenue looks good at 99%. Lights is at 90.79%. That's because insurance reimbursements were lower than we had projected. And Parks and Rec revenue is at 93% because of lack of civilian rents, for obvious reasons. Down to the expenditures, we are at $9,538,830 is our actual. The amended budget was $10,396,000, so that means we're at 73.4% on expenditures. So that's, that's really good. That's why we have, if you look all the way down at the bottom, the revenue over expenditures is over by $383,960. I hope we're not too far off from that because we would be adding all of that to fund balance. Some of the reasons that we're down, IT is at 84%, and that's because supplies, durable goods, and capital expenses are under budget. Cemetery at 87%. Wages, utilities, repair and maintenance, and capital expenses are under budget. Police is at 90%. Salaries are below budget due to the unfilled positions. They didn't happen when we had planned for them. Continuing education expenses are well under budget. Building maintenance expenses are also under budget. Fire overall is at 93%. Wages, supplies, continuing education, meals for long-distance transfers, and capital building maintenance expenses are all below budget. Public Works overall is at 94% because repairs and maintenance are considerably under budget by over $30,000. Lights, we are at 88% of budget. Wages are low due to, I explained this last time, due to hanging Christmas lights being charged to Public Works. Professional contractual is under budget, as is equipment rent. Parks and Rec is only at 63%. Looks like the equipment rent is under budget as well as repairs and maintenance. And then other financing uses is at 100% because those are transfers. On the second page, Steve, if you could move it to the next page, please. These are the cash balances and investments. Um, okay, general fund is at $3.2 million, which you can see is a significant increase from June 30 of 2019. And that's because a lot of CDs we converted into cash because of the low returns on investments. We're moving more towards municipal bonds than we are with CDs. And just, just so y'all know, we actually invested in a portion of Alpena Public Schools' bonds that they sold. So that's kind of interesting. I wanted to do that. Um, let's see, Major Street Fund is at $287,000, which is low as compared to last year. And that's because cash was saved in anticipation of the Miller Street Project, which was paid for in the current fiscal year. Tree Park Improvement Fund is low because we're using that up. Sewage is, it's higher. Cash balance increased due to projects that were done that only required water services, which resulted in an increased cash balance in the sewer fund. Moving down to building inspection, you'll see a big negative in front of that. So it's negative $227,791. And that's because there was the site review fee for the hospital. It was actually for fiscal year 20, but we didn't receive it until mid to late July.
With the building permanent.
Building permanent. So the, looking at it, when I did this report last week, the cash is actually not positive. It's at $114,000. But, so we received the cash, but we still had to do the transfer from the building inspection fund to make the general fund full. So that's why the cash is negative, but we received the cash in July. That makes some sense. Moving down to the construction fund for the Department of Public Works, that is low because we borrowed for the fire EMS department. Retiree or employee healthcare, $1.49 million is the cash balance, which is up. We, if you remember, we transferred investments to PNC in January of this year. Moving down to perpetual lock care cash, it's at $833,000 versus $570,000 from last year because of the government bond being cashed out. So it's sitting in cash and just waiting for something to invest it in. The retiree or employee healthcare, um, let's see, cash, cash is negative. Overall, it's at $1.5 million versus $1.3 last year.
Why do we have these two spots?
That's the same as retiree employee healthcare. Huh, I'm going to have to look into that one. Yeah, that's, um, okay, going all the way down to the bottom, the last part is the pension. We are at $25,714,000 versus $25,986,000 at June 30 of last year. And we know that's due to COVID, but we are rebounding from that. So I'm excited to see the next quarter ending report. That's all I have. Does anybody have any questions?
I could go. You're welcome. Thank you very much. Yeah, that's good.
I will briefly save and fire.
Second.
Mayor Walagora?
Hi.
Mayor Potem Johnson?
Yes.
Councilman Mitchell?
Yes.
And Councilman Noah?
Yes.
Motion free.
All right, next up, we drop down to unfinished business. It's a proposal, proposed changes to Evergreen Cemetery regulations. Rich is coming up.
Just, just a brief update. We began with schedules and Sean. We did not, we didn't get together to assemble that, so, but we'll report it at the next council meeting.
Okay. Let's do that. Thank you, Rich. I move we table the... It's postponed.
Postpone.
Sorry. Postpone.
To the next meeting?
Yes. That was through the board. August 17. Sorry, we were schooled while you were on. I leave for one meeting and this is...
Don't leave next time. Was there a second on that?
Yes.
Okay. Mayor Potem Johnson?
Yes.
Councilman Mitchell?
Yes.
Councilman Noah?
Yes.
And Mayor Walagora?
Hi.
Motion free.
Thank you. Next up, new business. First up is 2020 valve replacement bid recommendation.
On July 28, the city received an open bids for the 2020 valve replacement project. This is an annual and ongoing project where we target replacement of deficient or failed valves or installation of new valves to reduce shutdown areas. And a good example of that was on the recent water break on Ripley Boulevard. Suez crews were required to close over 30 valves to keep moving out as valves were broken or weren't closing properly. So we, we had to keep going out. So one of the, in this year's program, we're targeting 16 valves to either isolate large areas or replace deficient valves. Five of those valves that we're targeting are going to be around that Ripley Boulevard area. This in conjunction, right now, we have the Forest Oliver Street up to bid, and that's going to require shutdowns of those streets. So we need to get those valves in and advance that. Five of the proposed replacement valves are located on the distribution lines along Ripley Boulevard within close proximity to the recent water break. The understanding is the Ripley valve repair will require the same shutdown area, which includes restaurants, several dentist's offices, and a school. With this in mind, the decision was made to complete the installation of these five valves during overnight hours to limit the impact to shut off for our water customers and motors. The preliminary plan includes shutting down Third Avenue and Ripley Boulevard beginning at 6:00 p.m., shutting water off at 9:00 p.m., installing the valves, and restoring water service and opening Ripley at Third Avenue by 7:00 a.m. the following morning. This will require various to the noise ordinance law and construction after 10:00 p.m. You know, if we start impacting the dentist's office and all that along there, which we, will happen when we go in there and shut that Ripley main off, it's difficult for them to work with that and schedule that in advance. What we opted for was to do a nighttime shutdown. One night, we'll get in there and get the work done. It's going to be an inconvenience for the residents in close proximity. There's none right there at that intersection, but we figured this was the better option than to try to do it during the day. And that was, and schedule was included in the bids. So bid documents were posted on the city's website, sent to five local firms and planning rooms, with three bids received as listed below. Team Elmers out of Hillman, $85,500. MacArthur Construction out of Hillman, $109,500. Bedrock Contracting out of Alpena, $138,940. Adequate funding in the amount of $130,000 has been established for the replacement of main valves in this year's budget, cover both the cost of the valves and assorted materials required, as well as the installation costs reflected in Team Elmers unit bid prices. As my recommendation, city engineer project be awarded to Team Elmers with bid unit prices totaling $85,500 and grant a variance to the noise ordinance to complete the project.
Just a quick question. Team Elmers, when we did the other replacements on the north side, was that the same firm? Or was that MacArthur that actually did the replacement?
MacArthur did those. Team Elmers, the most recent project we did was in Lobbit and Park Place over there by the fairgrounds. We did that. They've done some other smaller projects for us. Do a good one.
Okay. All right, that wasn't my main question. I recognize the name. I just wanted to see if they had some experience on the... No other questions, Mr. Mayor?
I don't have any questions. I think you're going to inconvenience people one way or another, so.
And I appreciate the fact that we're doing this at night because, yeah, I think we're trying to work with businesses that way. So I think that's, you know, a moment. The other question I had maybe, do you need two separate motions on the noise variance as well, Phil?
Yeah, you should do a separate.
I move we approve the bid from Team Elmers for the valve replacement project in the amount of $85,500.
Councilman Mitchell?
Yes.
Councilman Noah?
Yes.
Mayor Walagora?
Hi.
And Mayor Potem Johnson?
Yes.
Motion free.
I move we grant a noise variance for the project, the valve replacement project.
Councilman Noah?
Yes.
Mayor Walagora?
Hi.
Mayor Potem Johnson?
Yes.
And Councilman Mitchell?
Yes.
Motion free.
Thank you. Next up is the comprehensive plan draft. Don Gilman is here.
Good evening. At a special meeting of the City Planning Commission on July 22, the draft of the City of Alpena Comprehensive Plan was reviewed. Several modifications to the plan were suggested and made in previous meetings, with one final recommendation to remove the reference to the Alpena Bio-Refinement. But as then given to you for your view as the final product.
The final draft.
Anyway, that would have, what I'm asking is that the council would approve it so we could begin the next step of sending it out for the 60-day, 63-day notice. But I know that some of you may have some questions about...
I do. On most of the economic portion of this comprehensive... On, on most of the economic portion of this comprehensive plan, most of the numbers deal with two thousand and sixteen, two thousand and seventeen, very little in two thousand and eighteen, even when we're talking about markets. Those numbers, if we're going to adopt a document in twenty twenty and the most recent we have on unemployment budget figures, all of that in that section is twenty sixteen, twenty seventeen, very little in twenty eighteen. To me, the document's already outdated.
So we can, I don't know where Denise might have got some of that information from. It may be, I mean, probably could get eighteen, you know, part of nineteen. I think it's probably a little slower because of COVID has affected everybody, but, so basically then send you'd like to see those numbers get brought up in the more current.
Yes.
Stand, okay. And we, we'll go through all of those economic numbers. So then, is there other questions too or?
Well, that was my big one. The rest of it looks pretty good, but that one just.
Okay. Then I know, Dan, you had some questions.
Just had, had the one primarily had to do with the fact that we only have the one movie theater and we may not have that one after this period of times like this, but we can't right now discuss what may happen in the future, Mark, but we should at least identify it as one and encourage others to please come in, kind of thing like this. Other than that, the other thing that Rachel had to do with the brownfields and I couldn't find anything on the website concerning brownfields in case someone was coming in from an outside area to want to do a business or something like this, what impacts are the brownfields having on business development?
Yeah, I mean, and the sort of budget numbers, I think the brownfields are all almost zero value in there in the budget. So right now, I have no feeling in that. Obviously, we really need to get the city.
We, if I may, we do have an inventory of eligible sites for brownfield funding because we do have a grant, a grant program currently in progress where there is money available, you know, for redevelopment, but it has to be an eligible site or you, the business has to apply for eligibility. So that's something that we can use for new development or redevelopment into the city. But as far as pure contaminated sites, I think, you know, there are some, but it's not something that would be addressed, I think, in, in that plan right now.
But you're, you're looking to address something more that's available within the plan, just as a heads up.
Right, because we have a discussion under the plan under the brownfields like this, but if the question comes about, well, where are these sites? You know, what is the intensity of contamination? What is the nature of the contamination or work like this? How contained is it? Are there monitoring wells? Are those, those kinds of things like this? And as I was discussing with Rachel, that was a big factor up in Ken Ross, part of our comprehensive plan. Had to do that because the Corps of Engineers was very big on that and I was involved with that on the board when we were up there. So if there's going to be discussion in the comprehensive plan of, of, of brownfield, then I would think that there should be some identifications really what, what they are, how serious or it's not serious or something like this. That's all about there. And maybe there should be a reference to it on the website in case someone is looking from outside the city, just like we would normally have for economics or anything else.
Yeah, we kind of, when, when developers, because I've been, you know, talking to them too coming in, I, I tell them that, you know, if they're, you know, site drops lead or brownfield eligible, where to go to get that information. I don't know if we, if the city really know the exact status of some of these sites because they're run by the, you know, ECU or Eagle, whatever it's called now. So I don't know, you know, maybe we could put something in there, just let people know that, you know, any, any potential development on a brownfield site, we could help. But I don't, I don't, personally, I wouldn't want to put on there, well, if you buy this lot, it's got this and that, you know, to what level of contamination is the case.
Could there be a link or something like this that if someone wanted to get further information, they could, if it was in the comprehensive plan that there's a link to this and they wish to research further?
Yeah, that would be the Department of, well, Eagle.
Right. There's that and we are currently working with our consultants through the Brownfield Authority to, you know, on an education and outreach plan, which would include a link on the website. And I think that that could also link to some of the environmental sites for contamination. So, and we can also talk to Denise Klein from NIMCOG about how we might address that within the plan.
Okay, so the next question. Do you feel comfortable approving this to move forward, letting staff make these changes or do you want this brought back? Because there's two options here. One is you, you approve the draft. There's still going to be out here in the future that were changes could be made, but until you approve the draft at this meeting, that sixty-three day clock is adjourned. So you don't have to do that. I mean, that's an option. The other option would be I'm going to have a planning commission meeting, whatever that Tuesday is, and I could talk to Denise before then and Rachel and we could get that included, run it to the planning commission, have them approve it, then it would be up to the next
We can approve the draft. I'm, I'm.
That'd be my draw, because that's the next step, but it has to be approved. Totally maybe forward to all their entities.
There's no sixty-two days.
There's going to be some changes.
There may or may not be other changes during the sixty-three days, so I think you could chalk ours out for the final, to incorporate it into the final. If that makes sense.
It does.
And Don, it made for great reading.
I thought it would make everybody.
So I will move that we approve the draft of the comprehensive, comprehensive plan.
Mayor Waldorf.
Hi.
Mayor Potem Johnson.
Yes.
Councilman Mitchell.
Yes.
And Councilman Noah.
Yes.
Would you agree?
Thank you. Next up is the City Goose Hunt twenty-twenty, also done.
Okay, as usually directed annually, I have gathered information for council to make a decision regarding whether or not to hold a goose management hunt again this year. This year, the Department of Public Works employees did not do any nest destruction or goose egg collection due to the COVID pandemic. And I think it probably shows, you know, if you've done it around town, there's a few geese. And that's one of the reasons why there are so many locals. Typically, they would take anywhere from a hundred and twenty-three to a hundred and twenty-six eggs would be collected out of the nest in the spring, which would reduce the local population. So local goose population, the city seemed to be higher this year than the last in the month of June until middle of July. At the end of June, I did a quick count, and when I do that, I did drive the beaches real fast, if I'm not giving them a chance to swim. Right about a hundred and fifty-seven along the waters. Because at that time, the geese, the little ones still can't fly, so they're not flying to the football fields and back. I mean, there are geese doing that, but not our local little ones because they can't fly. Now, you know, there's about two hundred to two hundred and fifty, maybe as many as three hundred round because they're flying. And that's what happens is ball gets closer, other geese come to the city to eat the salad bowl that we set for them along the park where we did, the grass is always green. The success in reducing the local goose populations lies in the numbers of local nesting geese that are removed through hunting. This reduces the number that will return to nest next year. Nothing will eliminate them, nor should that be a goal of rather keeping the local goose numbers at a reasonable level to reduce nuisance interactions between them and people. Last year's hunt, there was a hundred and fifty geese were harvested in three days. If allowed, we will be using the same hunters as last year, maybe a little bit less because hunting, we have to exercise the COVID thing too, can't be bunched as close together as normal. But again, it'll all be responsible individuals, all hunters sign a waiver statement as has been done in the past prior to hunt beginning. And we received permission from the county commissioners to hunt the fairground property as the geese there causing a mess as usual in the camping areas and bike paths along the river. Hunting at the fairgrounds will take place on the interior of the track with shooting towards the river. We also plan on hunting Miskiwick Beach as we did last year, planning on trying to hold three hunts in the early goose season, the first being on Thursday, September third, and then again on the next two following Thursdays, the tenth and seventeenth. Hunts would begin at daylight, conclude at one PM. The extra hour just helps, again, eliminate a few more of the local geese as they return around now, wherever they are, come back into the fields, we're going back towards the river to the water. Costs for conducting the hunts will be less than a thousand dollars. Bike path gates are closed and are barricaded directly to close out the hunting areas as well as press releases and signage as has been done in the past. No hamper will be allowed to hunt the river camp sites during the hunt. All this, of course, is dependent on council direction in regard whether or not to hold a hunt. So we're asking if council wants to authorize a goose management hunt this year under these guidelines, the line above, or not.
Would you like? I would just like to say, because I know where this is going and you know how I'm going to vote, we said we applied for a license next year to go and collect eggs and do more of that upfront than.
Oh, we will next year.
But we didn't do it this year.
No, we didn't have anybody to do it because of COVID, because we were shut down, remember? Accept essential services, it wasn't any essential service, otherwise they would have done it. We always, we always apply for the license. We always have the training, DPW. They always apply.
Does it have to be DPW employees that actually collect the eggs?
It has to be people that have went to the DNR training class and how to do it.
So if, if, if we could get people who would like to do that into the training, but we could send more people out to collect more eggs?
Okay, now I'm just going to tell you how I feel.
Okay. You already did that.
It's a noble cause and I understand people would like to do that, but I think, you know, Sean's the director of the DPW, I think in his defense, to take a bunch of volunteers out, that, you know, I think Sean does it on the day it needs to be done and plan to have available personnel to do it, so.
Now, can I tell you what, how I think, based on what you just said, is that Sean can take volunteers out for a day to do this, but you're taking volunteers out to shoot them.
Correct. They're under my direct supervision.
But it's no different if Sean takes a group of volunteers and collects the eggs early on, or if you take out a group of volunteers, shoot them, there's, there's still groups of volunteers.
Well, yeah, that, and again, city, that'll just be up to Sean. I mean, I don't know what, how, how the training works out, I just know because I've never done the training, but I always ask Sean, what does it take? Because other communities have reached out on what you have to do to collect eggs. And that's what Sean told me, there's a certain training you have to take. And then there's a certain way to do it. They teach you how to tell if there's a goose egg already where you don't take it, if it's just like the old question, goodbye for sure or something like that.
Touches.
Yeah. Maybe, maybe Rich can talk to Sean, I mean, if you're, you're a supervisor and maybe come back and, because that's in the, that's in the spring.
Yeah.
And it's only assuming that the training is probably in the winter or something. Maybe, maybe, Rich, you could just, at some point before then, just give us a, a quick, a quick idea of what, what the DPW thinks of that or what you do, because that's your department and maybe go from there. Sounds like a good idea to me. The more people you have, the more eggs you're collecting. Yeah, we might as well do a little research and see.
Is there a maximum number of eggs that can be collected?
No.
That'll be in Rich's report.
So is that the idea then that this is, we couldn't get them this year and we're going to hunt for more, that we can collect five hundred eggs next year, it'd be okay?
They, they take everyone they can find.
Kind of.
Right, right.
All right, let's not get too far off the hunt part. But if you could get some data, stuff like that, answers to questions we might have, that would, that'd be kind of cool.
They call it Easter egg hunt.
It's Easter egg hunt.
Well, and this is my first year with this too, so I'll learn a little bit more about it. You know, we can make any modifications or changes, you know, if, if there seems to be a, a better way of doing things, so. Thank you.
I don't have any issues with the hunt. It seems to have been successful without issues, so. It's benefited. I mean, you know, I, I just, from personal experience, I'm like myself, that number of complaints that we've got about the bike paths.
But if we collected the eggs beforehand, we couldn't have the problem with some of that.
Yeah, and I have to back up, Don, because, you know, I did a little trip myself this year, just to say, and you were right, right about the, you know, the end of July when we were back in, you could really see the population of geese go up, so.
Yeah, that's just nature. When they deploy, you're the one.
Yeah, that's, you're not the only hunter that totally does anything, so, so just to back that up. I will make motion to authorize the city goose hunt.
Mayor Potem Johnson?
Um, no.
Councilman Mitchell?
Yes.
Councilman Noah?
Yes.
And Mayor Waldorf.
Thank you.
Just had a quick clarification on my report. I found why that was mentioned twice and it was an error from last quarter. So if you want to know for comparison, at March thirty-first, we were at one point five million and now we're at one point four nine million on retiree healthcare.
Thank you. I move you, Jim.
Second.